Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our very first video conference meeting of our City of Guthrie, our City of Guthrie Public Works and City Council meeting. And we will start, as we always do, with our pledge to our country and our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll have a prayer. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, during this time of great challenge in our country, in our state, and in our city, guide us so that we may seek to provide the leadership that focuses on the health and safety of all of our citizens. Father God, provide us the vision that will result in the continued success of our community as we deal with the economic impact of the COVID-19 challenge. And Father, grant us the wisdom, understanding, and courage to continue to be good stewards of the responsibilities and the trust bestowed on this council by the citizens that we represent. In your name we pray. Amen.
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 I have got some introductory remarks that kind of set the stage since this is our first video conferencing meeting. So if you can bear with me, I'm going to, well, first of all, I'm Steve Getling. I'm speaking from the chambers, council chambers itself. But every member of the council and the staff that will be responding tonight are in independent and different locations. And that's why we are coming to you without masks. So let me kind of set the stage for what we're doing tonight. Under the authorization provided by Senate Bill 661, the Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 Guthrie Public Works Authority and City Council meetings will be conducted via video conferencing in lieu of the traditional in-person meeting format. With those changes, I'd like to review a few of the guidelines that we are using along with this technology. The meetings will be utilizing the Zoom video conference platform that will go live approximately five minutes or has gone live approximately five minutes before our regular scheduled meeting time of seven o'clock. The Oklahoma Open Meeting Act requires that public be allowed to observe the meeting. Opportunities for the general public to observe this meeting are on the following links. The GTV20, which is the Guthrie Cox Channel 20. Live streaming is also available on the city's Facebook page. The link for that is www.facebook.com/cityofguthrie. And also live streaming on Guthrie News Page. And the link for that is www.facebook.com/guthrie news page. While the Opening Meetings Act does not require the public to be given an opportunity to participate in meetings, it is our policy to give the public the opportunity to present comments to the council. With that in mind, here is the process that we have initiated and the guidelines for the public comment in advance of this meeting agenda, which was posted and distributed to the local media outlets. Public comments were to be submitted in advance to the city clerk, Kim Biggs, by email prior to two o'clock this afternoon. Each person submitting a public comment was required to submit their name and address along with their comment, identify the topic or subject of their comment, and limit their comments to a total of roughly 750 words, which is about five minutes. Comments will be limited to City of Guthrie residents and non-residents who either work for or operate a business within the City of Guthrie. Comments, the city clerk or designee will read the public comments either at the start of the meeting or at the beginning of the discussion of the particular agenda item which the individual identified on the agenda. If there are multiple comments on any one topic, once it is obvious that the comments are overlapping or repeating themselves, the balance of the comments will be summarized. We are recording this meeting and a copy will be placed on our City of Guthrie YouTube page and it will also remain on Facebook for future reference. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we'll begin with our regular meeting. I call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of Tuesday, April 21st. The second item on the agenda are four proclamations, which I have the honor of reading. And the first proclamation, whereas animals of all shapes, sizes, and species fulfill many important and vital roles in our lives and in our hearts, and whereas the vast majority of animals are cared for and loved appropriately as either livestock or as family members, and whereas many animals, however, are abused, hoarded, overbred, tortured, neglected, abandoned, taught to fight or kill, or subject to some other atrocity, and whereas animal control officers are committed professionally trained women and men who have a unique desire to serve their fellow man and all other creatures, great and small. Whereas animal control officers are generally devoted to their professional and personal time and the care and welfare of the animals, and whereas the City of Guthrie animal control officers maintain one of the highest animal adoption and placement rates for an Oklahoma municipality animal shelter, whereas our animal control officers maintain one of the most successful and long-lasting volunteer programs in the state, and whereas our animal control officers do an excellent job of preventing rabies from threatening the inhabitants of our city, and whereas each of our animal control officers has exhibited exceptional empathy and professionalism while providing service above self while performing their daily duties. Now be it therefore resolved, I Stephen J. Getling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, declare the week of April 12th through 18th, 2020 to be National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens and our creatures great and small, safe. Chief, would you like to make any comments there concerning the animal control officers under your jurisdiction?
Yes, Mayor. As you know, we have three animal control personnel and they do a lot of really great things out there for the citizens of our community. They take a lot of pride in their work. And especially during this time of pandemic, they have really risen to the to the issues that face us. We never expected this pandemic to really touch on animal control, and it does every day. And I am so very proud of how they respond and react to the new issues that they face. We have three good people that the city can take a whole lot of pride in.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Next proclamation. Whereas Americans are the victims of 20 million crimes each year affecting individuals and communities, whereas reaching and serving all victims of crime is essential to supporting thriving communities because those who receive holistic services and support are more likely to remain invested in their communities. And whereas dedicated victim service providers are working every day to meet the needs of crime victims, yet there are still too many victims without meaningful access to their rights and services. Whereas many victims face barriers such as isolation, distrust of authority, language limitations, lack of transportation, or cultural barriers that keeps them from accessing the services and criminal justice systems that can help them recover from crimes. And whereas we must make a dedicated effort to expand the circle of those prepared to respond to victims and link them to the resources that can help them recover. And whereas engaging a broader array of healthcare professionals, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that provide for their safety, healing, and access to justice. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenged to reach or serve, are afforded their rights and receive a trauma-informed response. Whereas the City of Guthrie is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our community and our victims responders, working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Guthrie recognizes April 19th through 25th, 2020 as Crime Victims Rights Week and that this city reaffirms its commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crimes during the Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year. And to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. At the honor of signing that proclamation. Chief, I know we have one of the leading rights groups, victims rights groups that was initiated by our police department here in Guthrie. You want to speak to that a little bit?
Yes, Mayor. The Crime Victims Rights Week is designed to inspire our community and raise awareness of victims' rights. Guthrie remains the leader in supporting these rights for victims by and through our nationwide and statewide recognized advocacy program. The two people that are grant-funded, almost 95% grant-funded through the state of Oklahoma and through a federal program, provide access to the court system, access to rights designated by statutory mandates, and make sure that our victims don't fall through the cracks. Make sure each and every one of them are served in a timely, efficient, and statutorily mandated manner. It is one of the things where we really excel as a community and it's something, again, that we should be very proud of.
Excellent. Yes. Thank you, Chief. And another group that we want to recognize tonight, also falling under the umbrella of our police department. This proclamation reads, whereas in 1991 congressional resolution named the second full week of April in every year as National Telecommunicator Week, and whereas emergencies can incur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas 911 is the lifeline for people in emergency situations and the 911 call-taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on the way. And whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenge of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency. And whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the communication center. And whereas public safety communication officers are everyday superheroes, providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on the scene. And whereas public safety communication officers are a vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activity by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety communication officers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire, and treatment of injuries and illness on a daily basis. And whereas each communication officer has exhibited courage, empathy, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties. Now be it therefore resolved that I Stephen J. Getling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, declare the week of April 12th through 19th, 2020 to be National Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose compassion, diligence, and professionalism keeps our region's citizens and emergency responders safe. Chief, you have comments there?
Yes, Mayor. Our small but dedicated group of dispatch personnel really appreciate your recognition of them. They have really exemplified the professionalism and dedication during these new and trying times. The number and type of calls that we receive every day has changed and they have really stepped up to the play and delivered to the citizens of this community.
And they're an extremely important connector between an emergency situation and the response to that emergency. They do an excellent job. The last proclamation that I have to read states as such. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout this nation and the world since trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil, lower our heating and cooling costs, clean the air, produce oxygen, and create habitat for wildlife. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in the state of Nebraska. And whereas trees provide numerous benefits such as increasing our property values, enhancing the economic validity of vitality of business areas, and beautifying our community. And wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Be it therefore resolved, I Stephen J. Getling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, recognize National Arbor Day on March 23rd, 2020 in the City of Guthrie and celebrate our continued certification as a tree city in Arbor Day 2020. Again, we've been a tree city. Guthrie's been a tree city for a number of years and this continues on with that certification. Before I get to our consent agenda items, which necessitates a vote, I need to take a roll call. And so I can see most of the people on board, but I'm going to just read off your name and if you are hearing me, if you'd just say in the affirmative. Jim Case?
Yes.
James Long?
Yes.
Jeff Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Bothroyd?
Yes.
Don Channel?
Yes.
Cheryl Paget?
Yes.
Okay, I confirmed that we have a quorum. In fact, we have all representatives, all councilmen on the on the telecommunication tonight. Item number three is the consent agenda. And we have two items. A is the approval of the Public Works Authority meeting of March 17th. And B is the approval of receipt of permit number SL000042200160, which basically is the construction of a sanitary sewer line involved with the Mineral Wells Park project. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, I'll again take a roll call vote. Jim Case?
Aye.
James Long?
Yes.
Jeff Taylor?
Aye.
Brian Bothroyd?
Aye.
Don Channel?
Yes.
Cheryl Paget?
Aye.
Steve Getling, yes. Unanimous approval then of the, of all those present to approve the consent agenda. Item number four.
Steve? Steve? Did we skip the comments because there weren't any?
I'm sorry. Yes, we did. There were, there were. Thank you very much, Councilman. There were no comments submitted by citizens by that two o'clock deadline. So there were no comments from citizens. Thank you. Item number four is the discussion and possible action on Resolution Number 2020-4, revising Langston University water rates effective from and including the utility billing to be mailed on or about June 30th, 2020. I think this is our annual rate adjustment. Kim, are you ready to comment on that?
I can. So it is the proposed rate increase based on the 2019 consumer price index, the same percentage increase that we used with real water, 2.3%.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Kim? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve Resolution 2020-4.
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Again, roll call vote. Jim Case?
Aye.
James Long?
Yes.
Jeff Taylor?
Aye.
Brian Bothroyd?
Aye.
Don Channel?
Yes.
Cheryl Paget?
Aye.
Steve Getling, yes. Unanimous approval of the City Council then on Resolution Number 2020-4. That being the last item on our Public Works Authority meeting, we are adjourned. And now I call to order our City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 21st. The consent agenda consists of three items. The approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting held March 17th. Approval of the minutes of the emergency City Council meeting held March 18th. Approval of the minutes of the emergency City Council meeting held April 6th. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote. Jim Case?
Aye.
James Long?
Yes.
Jeff Taylor?
Aye.
Brian Bothroyd?
Aye.
Don Channel?
Yes.
Cheryl Paget?
Aye.
Steve Getling, yes. Unanimous approval then of the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Item number three, discussion and possible action to approve either option one or two concerning the installation of three 20-foot octagon gazebos at Mineral Wells Park as a part of the LWCF grant project. Tenny, are you making the comments on this?
I can.
Tenny?
Staff has, staff has, staff has got a couple of options for you guys to consider this evening. Option one would be to allow staff to purchase the three gazebo kits and construct them ourselves in-house using in-house staff. Or option two is to go with the low bid with C4L and allow them to purchase the gazebo kits and erect them.
And there's about a $50,000 difference in cost?
I thought, roughly $50,000. I thought all along we were going to buy them and y'all were going to erect them. Has that changed?
I guess this is just confirming that that's what the council would like to do.
I just asked if that changed. I mean, I thought that was the original plan. Originally, yes, that's something we looked at. But then we also looked into other options as well to to get a variety for the council to look at and see which direction they wanted to go with as a whole. So it's changed because originally when we approved this thing way back, we were buying the gazebos and city staff was installing them. So something's changed, but that's okay. Just pointed out.
I think you just given us two different options. One's to go with our original plan with them doing it and the other is to have these other guys do it and free Tenny up for other things. Those are the two options, as I understand it.
Since the concrete hasn't been poured yet for sidewalks is our way that we could get the concrete company, it's going to pour the sidewalks to go ahead and pour our pads so those could be colored and stamped to match our sidewalks and then the city could still erect them? Yes, I believe that's an option. With reaching out to the contractor and seeing what an additional change order would be and then bring that back to the council at that time. Main thing we're looking at right now is just being able to get the gazebo kits ordered and get them on their way. I'd say order them. Let's get them on their way.
Yeah, I do too. Yeah, I agree.
I just, it would be nice to see the concrete actually match the sidewalks that are being poured so it's all cohesive. Those are going to be stamped and colored. It would be nice if the foundation for those gazebos.
But we don't, we don't have a price on that. Is that right, Tenny? We don't have a price on the, on the concrete extending to the base of the gazebos?
The only price that I have right, the only price that I have right now on the concrete for the gazebos is just for city staff to pour just your standard concrete. We don't have any price on what the actual color concrete would be. Of course, we would be using city staff to stamp it anyway, no different than we're doing with the sidewalks. So we'll just have to reach out to the contractor and see what, adding the additional concrete to his contract, what that would, how it would adjust the contract. Well, so if we're going to stamp it, then we have to color it, right? We can't just stamp raw concrete, really. Yeah. Yeah, you can stamp whether it's raw concrete or colored concrete. Well, I know, but it's kind of futile to stamp uncolored concrete.
Tell me something. In light of what Brian's talking about, Tenny, how are they coloring this? Is this pre-mixed colored or are they powdering the top of it?
They're not. He said he doesn't have a bid on that. It, the existing sidewalks. The existing sidewalks.
I believe, I believe what we had approved was the coloring of the sidewalks. I believe that's, is that not true, Tenny?
Yes. What we currently have approved is the sidewalks. And that is, to answer Brian's question, that is mixed in the concrete. It's not powdered on top. Okay, so in that vein, how much more was it to color the sidewalks? That'll get us the basis on what it's going to cost to color the gazebo paths. Well, we don't have to cross that bridge right now. Let's just let them order the thing and then he'll bring us a bid back.
I think.
Leroy would like to say something.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay.
If we're in agreement with what James Long suggested, what you would do tonight is approve option one to go ahead and order the three gazebo kits directly from gazebo depot. We would wait on order to concrete. We would follow up with the company C4L that's doing the concrete paths. Get a change order quote from them to use red concrete. And then they would lay all the gazebos. We would stand. That change order would come back to you at the next meeting to prove. If we think it's too high, then we could always call back to city staff installing the red concrete and stamp it.
Steve, I'd like to make a motion to go with option one.
Second.
Okay, option one. Certainly purchasing the kits.
And that's all you need to do tonight if you're going to get a bid from CL4 to install the concrete.
Okay, so the second part of option one says purchase approximately $6,000 of concrete. Do we still, is that still viable?
How about, how about we approve option one as amended?
Okay, without, without, without a decision on the concrete?
Right.
Right.
Okay, I'll entertain a sec, we have a second, I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to go ahead with the purchase of the gazebo. But hold on the, on the final decision of actually the concrete base until more information is available. Roll call vote again, Jim Case.
Aye.
James Long.
Yes.
Jeff Taylor.
Aye.
Brian Bothroyd.
Aye.
Don Channel.
Yes.
Cheryl Paget.
Aye.
Steve Gettling, yes, unanimous approval then of the City Council to move ahead with the purchase of the of the gazebo kits. And request additional information on the actual concrete pad that the kits will be built on. Item number four, discussion and possible action to approve a quote by Haskell Lemons Construction. To mill and resurface the two hundred block of North Division. Tenny, I guess you're taking the lead on this one too?
Yes, Mayor, staff had recently became aware that ODOT had let the bid to Haskell Lemons for their. Resurfacing project milling and resurfacing project. That would come through Guthrie, starting from industrial and come all the way down north to Cleveland. And jog down one block on Cleveland and then all the way out north to. Fogarty School. And then also the same contractor is doing a resurfacing and milling project, starting out east of town. Coming all the way through town on Highway thirty-three to Southwest nineteenth roughly on the west side of Guthrie. Staff presented a request to the Street Committee on March the tenth. To acquire a quote from the same contractor, which is Haskell Lemons. To pave the one, the two hundred block of North Division. So that we kind of tie everything together in our downtown at the same time. That quote came back right at twenty-four thousand seven ninety-eight and seventy-five cents. Staff is now bringing it to the council for council approval.
So this will, this will make that 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 street pretty seamless then, especially using the same contractor.
Yes, and we, yes, Mayor, and we also be able to kind of piggyback that same contract using same unit prices.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the quote by Haskell Lemons Construction.
Full move.
And and a second, I heard the second.
I second.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Jim Case.
Aye.
James Long.
Yes.
Jeff Taylor.
Aye.
Brian Bothroyd.
Aye.
Don Channel.
Yes.
Cheryl Paget.
Aye.
Steve Gettling, yes, unanimous approval then to approve that quote by Haskell Lemons Construction for the milling and resurfacing. Of the two hundred block of North Division. Comments by members of the council and actually Leroy else ask if you would like to make any comments?
None of the agenda.
Okay, it isn't, I see that. Comments by members of the council, Councilman Case.
Well, back to what we were just talking about on the North Division, Tenny, you and I talked, we talked, Jeff. We talked on streets about trying to get a interlock done for our traffic signals, do they're about the same time. So that we could control the traffic there on Division much better and get a better flow. And I was, did we ever, have we gotten anywhere on that yet? On the interlock for the.
On that right now.
Be the yellow blinking lights.
Currently working on that. We're currently working on it, I've I've been working with the engineer today and then also trying to. Our pre-work for the bill and surface is tomorrow and I'll find a whole lot more information out on who the contractor is that. That they'll be using for the replacing the existing loops and stuff during that project so that we can kind of tie some more stuff together there.
Fantastic, all right, thank you.
Councilman Long.
No comments.
Okay, Councilman Taylor.
Yeah, just wanted to say thanks to the fire and the police, Public Works, nine-one-one staff, I really think you guys have done a great job. I know it's tough right now with COVID nineteen and I see a lot of that coming and going, but. And also one other thing, we missed our eighty-niners and but we'll, something will happen on that here before long too. But other than that, that's all I got to say, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Bothroyd.
Just hoping everybody's staying safe and I know that, you know, there's a lot of frustration out there with people that. You know, want to open up and a lot of people don't want to open up and we have to realize, I mean, at one point in time. You know, everybody's going to have to get back in the in the groove of things, so just stay safe is all I got.
Councilman Channel.
I'm good.
Councilwoman Paget.
All I can say is I hope everybody is getting a lot of work done while this. Quarantined at home is going on, enjoy your time with your family and stay safe.
Just a couple of comments here, again, kind of along with with what many of you have said. Obviously, thanks for, to not only our 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 city employees and first responders, but. You know, healthcare workers, pharmacy workers, grocery stackers and checkers, checkers on all, all the various businesses. The food service folks have been doing significant job even though they're they're limited to just to carry out. Truckers, people that we oftentimes probably take just. Appreciate them for all the things that they do to make our lives a whole lot easier. I think we're we're beginning to understand and appreciate them a whole lot more and so thanks to all those people. That are helping us get through this significant challenge with this COVID nineteen. Somebody mentioned the eighty-niner celebration that we missed and hopefully that can be rescheduled. Obviously, another thing was the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Murrow bombing, Murrow Building bombing. And I think we are having something, some memorial to recognize the six citizens of Guthrie that were lost. Perished in that bombing, as well as the twenty-four first responders, firemen from Guthrie that responded to that. Significant event in our state history, state and national history. And a memorial, I think, is scheduled later on again as things clear up with this virus. And in association with the Minister Alliance, so look forward to rescheduling of both of those things. Eighty-niners and a memorial concerning the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Murrow bombing. Vacancies, we've got a few vacancies, I know we've got vacancy on on our forestry committee. I think we've got a few more coming up in library, go to the City of Guthrie website and and check it out if you're interested in. In being more significantly involved in in our community and the directions that we go on those various committees and boards. With that being the last item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen.